All board members are present, so we've established a forum and we're to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I don't see that anybody's here for open forum.
Ms. Mehdi, you're gonna, for Mr. Knibbling, right, you're gonna give us a little bit of feedback on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
During his time?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, sounds good. So we'll go to approve agenda, changes to agenda?
I have none.
Okay. Alright, so we'll move to conflict of interest, which there aren't any?
We have to approve them.
Oh, even though there aren't any?
Um, yeah, you want to adopt it as it is.
Okay.
Approved agenda, yeah.
Need a motion to approve.
Moved by Sean Felder and seconded by Pearl to approve the agenda, any other discussion? Here in non-no on favor, Zach?
Aye.
Pearl's same side, motion carried.
Alright, we'll do, there's no conflicts of interest listed, nothing new, anybody knows that? Alright, so we'll move to approve consent agenda, which is A, approve December minutes, and B, approve claims. Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Leishner, seconded by Turner to approve the consent agenda, any other discussion? Here in non-no on favor, Zach?
Aye.
Pearl's same side, motion carried.
Alright, we'll move to information, discussion, staff reports, and we'll start with the high school principal report.
I am here to give an update on the Trojan Den that we use, I thought you guys would like to see some of the numbers. I know we talked a little bit about it last year, this year we're kind of getting into a better swing of things. I did print out some numbers, so it's a little bit easier, and then we're gonna switch things up this month, hopefully. Now I'm just explaining what this means. I'm trying to keep better numbers, but these are kind of just my numbers, that's not including other teachers going in there and grabbing things. We're trying to figure out a better system, just so we can keep track of more things. In December alone, it says hygiene bags, that's like a full bag that has shampoo, conditioner, body wash, everything in it. We hand them the whole bag, usually like new kids get those if they need to go in there. But we went through seventeen of those. Single hygiene items would be just going in and grabbing single items of those, we went through about thirty-eight of those. Large bag items is actually like families coming in, and we have like a thirty gallon garbage bag that they basically fill up. Clothes, hygiene stuff, blankets, shoes, all of that. We had quite a few new families who have come into the district, so we went through about sixteen of those. And that's like, I mean, they are full to the brim by the time they kind of leave. Small needs grabbed when we're going and grabbing just a shirt here or there, there was about thirty-two items. Winter coats, we've gone through ten. Boots and shoes just out of the den, we went through ten. Plus, earlier this year with Nancy Lorenz, there was forty-six pairs of brand-new shoes that we bought. The church raised the money for those, and then they bought thirty brand-new pairs of snow boots, too. Kids could sign up for those, that almost tripled from last year's numbers. So, um, snow pants, we had sixteen, we actually had to order quite a few new pairs out of the Trojan Den money. The blankets, we have a church that hand makes blankets. There's an organization in school, I'm trying to think which one, gave us some tie blankets, too, which have been going pretty popular. Eleven of those, life kits, we go through quite a few of those, eight, which is a nice, because those are spendy. Sports club specific items, that would be like ordering shoes, shirts for kids, like going, like the white shirts for FCCLA. Basketball shoes, anything like that is a sports-specific item, that we order them usually brand-new, because they need a specific size. We went through twelve of those just in December. Parent items, um, when the parents come in to help, like all of their kids, we have quite a few parents who need some clothing, too. So they've been getting some stuff, so there's about two large bags, and then sometimes they just ask us for like a winter coat, if we have some extras, stuff like that. Baby need items, we don't provide those here, but I have a contact in Mitchell, then I just message her sizes and needs, and we meet up in Mitchell and I grab what she can give me. So then we provide those through the Mitchell caring closet out of the Mitchell High School. Three of those, extra items given, gloves, we actually ordered about four hundred pairs for the elementary. Those might last us through January. Christmas gifts for a family in need, we ordered some of those. The fundraiser we have listed on there, just so we can keep track of stuff, that was actually on a GoFundMe that went around town and stuff. We raised about eight thousand dollars for that family. Volunteer hours, approximately, and this is all year, not just December, about a hundred and forty hours of volunteer hours. Usually, students come in during their SRBs, we had Crystal Travis in the elementary, gave us about forty hours this semester down there, and she plans on helping out next semester, too. When do we meet families? I usually meet them on like a Sunday night. It just works out better for their schedule, usually they're not working at that time, so I come over here, it takes about one to two hours to fulfill a family's needs. I don't honestly track a lot of those hours. Listed below is a lot of high-need items, if you go down there, like everybody always says it looks so full. We do a really good job of stocking, and then what we don't use, we redonate. But actually, like kids' items, sizes six through ten, if we need two kids or more, we're gonna run out. Those, there are certain sizes that if we have one or more needs, we're not gonna have everything that we need. Last year, we had a really cool, the Church Endemic helped us do what we called break boxes, where we supplied food for families during like Christmas break, Easter break, and then during the summer, too. They could not help us out this year, so I'm gonna try to find a grant for next year to do that one, because the families have been asking about, we had about eighteen families that we helped out during breaks last year, and it was pretty good-sized boxes of, they made actual meals, cards, and gave all the recipes and what they needed to cook those meals. So it was a good supplement during the longer breaks and stuff, so I'm hoping to find something to supply those. But other than that, the second page I gave you is actually what we just started to do in December. That way we can keep better track of what we're going through, plus, our goal is to help more kids, not so much like bulking out, but have them come in a few times a year, where we can give them summer and winter stuff. And it also helps us keep track of what we're really going through. I actually got this form, some high school girls revamped it for me, but I, my contact in Mitchell helps me out a lot, she started her closet up there. And we're also gonna start, once a month, hopefully this, this January will be our first time, we're gonna have open Saturdays where you can sign up for a time on, oh, there's a tracking system, where you can come in for an hour, sign up for your time, you tell us what you need, we're gonna have volunteers helping you out. You have to be an adult volunteer, we won't have the students in there. But, um, so families will be able to sign up that way. Right now, they've just been contacting me, but this way more families know that they can contact or come in those Saturdays. So, that'll kind of pick up our pace in there, too. But I kind of just thought you guys would like an update on how it's going, it's actually pretty busy this year. And we're starting to get a better feel of how to run it a little bit better, and the kids are getting a little more comfortable, I think, going in there or asking for stuff. Going in there and grabbing stuff if they need stuff, Mrs. Cuff is right there to help them out, so it's pretty busy in there.
Is this, these numbers, you think they've increased significantly since you started it, or?
Oh, I think so definitely, I think it's more of a comfort level, too. Kids are okay with going in there, we helped one new student today alone, she got a pretty good bag to go home, she was pretty excited. And it's nice, too, when they come in to get, especially if they're new to the district, we have a lot of Trojan gear down there. So we always make sure they get some Trojan gear, so that way they have their blue and orange to sport. She even picked out quite a few of those today, she said orange really wasn't her color, so we'll get her there. But, um, yeah, as far as even, that was her first really day in the school, and she was pretty comfortable with it. So I think the kids all know, hey, by the way, if you need something, it's right here.
Very good, thank you for the update. Anybody have other questions? So if, and you put something on Facebook when you have needs?
Facebook is my big go-to for needs, usually, honestly, the community is really great. I usually have most of our needs fulfilled by the end of the day. We constantly have bags sitting in the, they drop them off in the high school or the elementary end. Our high need is like hygiene items, shampoos, conditioners, but clothing-wise, we constantly have an influx of clothes coming in. So, and if I have a specific one, you know, we have some that I have to order specific sizes. But if we have a certain need, like earlier, we needed really tall boy pants, so a parent right away went and bought some and dropped them off, and, so yeah, we've had really good community involvement, too.
You have a Facebook page, right?
Yes.
Yep, what's it called?
The Trojan Den.
And, okay, and you can just like it and follow it, and then you post it?
Absolutely, and I, at the beginning of the year, I send stuff home with all of the, especially the elementary kids, and then to get their parents to follow it, that way if they need something, too. But now that we'll have the open Saturdays, hopefully, I'll send information home on that, too. But the high school, since it's right there, they kind of all know about it. Elementary's a little bit harder, because they don't see the sign and stuff in the room, and.
Thank you, thanks, guys.
Hi, Tony? Hey, sorry I'm late, we got a, uh, junior MBA stuff going on, so I'm trying to wrangle some third-grade boys at the same time. Been good stuff. You know, I don't have a whole lot, I know I'm really busy, but I can sound like it by what I talk about, I just, I think that, what is crazy today was, I forgot to kind of ask for a few extra ideas. Here is some of the stuff to report on, one would be is, you know, I liked how the e-learning discussion we had before all the winter storms started to happen. I think we definitely were ahead, I thought the e-learning went very well in the six to twelve end. I mean, I guess, you know, there was no negative feedback, really. I think there was only a couple kiddos that were not able to log on, but I would say probably about ninety-eight percent of the students were on and present. And hopefully got a little something out of them, I thought that was especially beneficial heading right into the semester test. I think if we would not have had that in place, to have those three days off, and then to turn around and try and do semester tests, would have been a real struggle, so I thought that that was good. And I know when I was talking to, I got a lot of educators, and one of the extended family Christmases I went to, they were kind of jealous about the fact that, you know, we got through that first blizzard without having to add days to the school year, I thought that was nice. So thank you for having that discussion and having it helping us be organized, because I thought that was really beneficial for us as we got going there. So, and we'll see, I mean, hopefully we're done using it, but I don't know, I know. I thought semester tests went pretty well. We kind of tried to uniform our expectations before, the teachers kind of picked what percentage first quarter, second quarter, and semester tests were worth, and I thought it was good for us to kind of get on the same page. So everybody went under the expectation of first quarter's worth forty-two and a half percent of your overall grade, second quarter's forty-two and a half percent of your overall grade, and then the semester test is fifteen percent. So I thought that that's a pretty fair makeup. A lot of schools go forty-two, twenty, but to me, I like to reward the quarters a little bit more, just for the fact that that's where the majority of your time was spent. So, but I did think it was pretty positive, and it went okay. You know, obviously, there's always a little bit of stress, but we're trying to help them prepare for what will be a bigger stress when they go to secondary education a little bit, or to, you know, higher education, so I thought that went well. We have five kids doing internship, right before Christmas break, I got to, we had two young ladies doing internships first semester, one with a vet, and the other one at the hospital, has an x-ray tech, and we got five more doing it this semester. So I like how we're starting to kind of build this internship program up. My goal is, is in about three years, is all seniors would do one, right, that's, that's the neat thing. So we're gonna need some cooperation within the community, with our businesses throughout, and hopefully kind of get us out into the community and kind of seeing what are some possible jobs that they like, and so I'm hoping that goes well. So I'm excited to see that we got seven total, and hopefully we'll double or triple that each year as we go. Our Quiz Bowl team, I don't know, you guys can maybe tell me, we made the final eight in the Q107.3 Quiz Bowl. So all, I think there's thirty-two local schools all around Mitchell that do a Quiz Bowl, and we made the final eight. And the final eight get to go to Mitchell, on Saturday, we were at the Pepsi-Cola Theater in downtown Mitchell, doing kind of an actual like up-on-the-stage Quiz Bowl like you'd see in a movie sometimes and stuff like that. So I thought that was a really neat experience. The Quiz Bowl team was made up of the top five in the senior class, in the class rankings. We won three out of four matches over the phone throughout November and December, made it there. We lost a tough one in the first round, so that dropped us into the seventh and eighth place game. Match, I guess you'd say, or we ended up with seventh place, so, but kudos to them. Kiana Hargens, Kayla Nagabauer, Wyatt Werzer, Ashlyn Tapio, and Caleb Webber. Those five were our group, and they made it, I don't know how often we've made it, but that was a neat deal. I'd like to build upon that, so hopefully we'll keep that going, that was fun. Other than that, our tutoring program really kind of hit its stride in December, and you can see in the weeks coming up, I feel like it's beneficial for both, I've gotten positive feedback from parents of students that were receiving the tutoring, of the students that were getting it. And what I think is kind of fun is, is the ones doing the tutoring seem to be enjoying it just as much. I had a kiddo that, we have a class right after school from three to fifteen that we call Intervention, where if you're struggling, you go, and I watched a kiddo that really only had to give fifteen minutes, stayed for an hour, just to make sure they're helping that kid out. That was kind of neat for both of them, for the kid to get a lot of work done, and I thought that kid felt pretty rewarded for having helped out. So that, that was neat as a tutor, so hopefully that stays going well there. Really, that's all I got, it's gonna be a busy couple months with getting our class offerings squared away, so that we can then in February, hopefully, start our class registration process, and it'll be over before you know it, so we're fine. Do you have any questions for me?
I have one question, when you do the tutoring, how do you decide who, who gets to be a tutor? How do you do that?
What we did right now is, we are leaning on our National Honor Society students. So the ones that are doing the tutoring, National Honor Society students have to give so many hours, donate so many hours, volunteer, both in the school and in the community, and so the school volunteer hours, we're using those as tutoring hours. I think that those are the ones that you want them to kind of shine as academic leaders there, and so that's who we asked, and we let them pick between being a, you know, a helper in the elementary or secondary. And I'd say we probably had about, out of our National Honor Society students, about half picked each. And so the ones that pick secondary, those are the ones, I'll just call them up and say, do you want, you know, I kind of ask them what subjects they'd like to help with, and then I try and pair them up based off of that.
Did everyone take semester tests?
The only ones that didn't take semester tests would be, if you are a senior and you have an A, they are allowed to not take that semester test.
Didn't know if we continued that.
Yeah, so we continued that part. You know, I know in the past, there was somewhere, a junior kid with As could pick two, and a sophomore could pick one, and all that, but, you know, I find value in that experience, I really want them to, to not feel like they're trying to get out of it. I'd really like them to embrace it and realize that that's something we can do and we're capable of. So the only ones that had that option is the seniors, and quite a few of them got it, though. It is a little bit of a carrot, too, if you stay on top of your academics as a senior, you'll be rewarded with most semester tests. So some of those kiddos were, you know, we had, our last day of school was technically Wednesday, but some of them were walking out of the door Monday afternoon, because they had all As, and so they had no semester test to do. I was teasing them, between that and then the three extra days in the back, so those ones had quite the lengthy Christmas break.
I thought that was a really good explanation, because I had some questions about that, too.
Yeah.
Students asking about that, and, you know, when you go to college, you take tests, sometimes all of your tests are like semester tests, the whole semester, so you have so much content you cover, so that was good for me, too, to hear that as a parent, like that's why we do that, so I appreciated that explanation.
And then I think, too, like some, I've had a couple of questions about why do middle schoolers have to take semester tests? That's a lot of stress for a middle schooler, but the goal there, too, is, is I want them, like if somebody's gonna like not prepare and do really bad on a semester test, I'd rather it be before it hits their transcript, so I'd like them as sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to get a little taste of it. I feel like we're not overwhelming them too bad, but I feel like they embrace that as well and do pretty well, too. So our, our next goal is to maybe find some carrots, some rewards for when you do well, you know, when you come back from Christmas, maybe we give them a little bit, more working on that there. It's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Adam?
Alright, start out with our elementary report. First, I just wanted to thank Mrs. Mehdi, she's done an amazing job for not only the high school end, but the elementary end, with all that the Trojan Den does for the kids here. Again, we have so many kids every day who forget hats, mittens, snow pants, and to have what we have to really support the kids and make sure that, you know, we never have to keep a kid in from recess, because we don't have an extra something here, has made a huge difference. And then, you know, any family in need, I think she has gone above and beyond to support all those families. It's really impacted our end here in a very, very positive way, so I just wanted to recognize her and thank her for coming in to share tonight what she shared. You know, I think back, so December, I want, you know, Mr. Knibbling brought up, I thought, you know, the feedback I heard on the Flex Learning, my staff talked about this was probably the best round of it that we've had. I think probably a couple of things went into that, I think we've been through it a couple times, but also we had a great support from parents, and, you know, teachers went out of their way to make sure they were communicating with the families, and I heard all really positive things, I'm sure it wasn't perfect on all fronts, but I think overall, it did go pretty well from the feedback that I heard, so I thought that was positive and pretty good for us. So, you know, thinking now, as we had to move forward for us, you know, I think a big thing for us now is, I've talked with our teachers, we want to assess and see where we're at, so we want to do some winter testing and see, reading-wise, kind of where we're at with growth. We test kids when they come in in the fall with their reading scores and kind of monitor that, you know, progress monitor that throughout kind of the fall and into the winter, and now that we've had coming off of a break. Sometime here in January, our teachers will be checking in with kids again to kind of see, are we making progress and trending in the right direction? And if we're not, then we're working on getting some of those interventions in place to help support kids. So that was a big thing I wanted to talk about tonight. Otherwise, you know, we're just gearing up for another semester here, so trying to get in our routine. Didn't really know how the kids would react coming back from such a long break, but I think they've done a great job coming in, and, you know, they're all excited to see their teachers and see their friends, and so it's great to have everybody back in the building now after the, you know, a couple additional days we had on to our break. So that's kind of where we're at elementary-wise. AD-wise, activities-wise, a lot of rescheduling that we've had to do. Feel good about where we're at with that right now, a lot of back and forth. We do have everything rescheduled at this point, only had to make one real big concession. We were supposed to have Sioux Falls Christian here last Thursday for a girls' game. We couldn't come to a, an agreement on a date that would work here, just with everything going on, so what we had to do there was, was flip our home and away, so instead of them coming here this year, we're gonna go there, but then they'll come back to us next year. Otherwise, we've been able to get everything rescheduled as planned, we've had to split a couple double headers and different things like that with basketball. But we're making it work, and I think we're gonna get everything in, you know, so the January schedule is, is pretty packed. Girls' basketball has four games this week, you know, and so that's just gonna be kind of how January is, where it's gonna probably be the norm to have three games. I think Mr. Bruning is at, we'll probably have quite a few weeks where that's gonna happen now, so, but we're gonna get a play-up. So that's the important part there, and I'm proud of the way that teams are competing, and, you know, we know that kids are gonna be a little bit tired, but I think they're kind of embracing that and excited for it, so, you know, I think things are trending in the right direction. Basketball's competing, wrestling's competing, they finished second in a tournament this weekend. We have the Little B coming up, which is a big one for, for us, twenty-first, so next weekend, that'll be coming up, and so, had the Parkston Classic over the Christmas break, and I think that went really well, it was really well-attended, I think we had good competition, you know, and I think it went pretty smoothly, so everything's going pretty good on that front, so that's right. Any questions on any, any of those things? Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. McKinnon?
Just a few things that referenced in your packet, lighting project is done, we paid the bills. Tonight, five-year cap out later, we're working on with some vendors. I have a pulse of sheet metal coming in tomorrow, we're gonna take a look at shop area as far as putting some ventilation in there for our welding equipment, so I'm gonna give some, give some ideas on a cool concept on that. Efforts, I think, were well-received as a school board, to reach out to the staff of the Christmas gift, and a token of appreciation, so I've heard a lot of verbal emails myself, I hope that maybe you guys have gotten some of that feedback on your own as well. So truly thank you for that. Legislative updates, misprinted, I put the ninth, but that should be the tenth, so that actually starts tomorrow. So all hundred and five will be in here tomorrow for the State of the State address, and I'll listen to that and see what the governor has to say, what direction we're going with that. But, you know, I think, Mr. Pearl, you are our land-designee, and then, you know, pushing information out, and I did reach out to all of our, our delegation, our legislators, and had feedback from them, so they're open, they're willing to have conversations, you know, kind of just, if you need help with education, I think there's a few new ones in our district, you know, nineteen, so, you know, I will, they'll reach out or not, they don't rightly know, they said they would, so hopefully that they do that, and we can help them with whatever they need, so. And then, obviously, you've seen the news that we got the governor appointed a new Secretary of Education since Tiffany Sanderson took the job at Lake Area. Dr. Graves, running the Mitchell School District for the last twenty-plus years, has accepted the offer to be the new Secretary of Education. So it'll be, for overall, be a good thing, so I truly believe that, so those are just kind of some of the updates. I wanted to make sure that everybody was up to snuff on, so that's all I have for now.
Alright, sounds good, thank you, any questions, Bruning? Alright, we'll move to discussion items. Discussion item A is policy review, section A, first reading, BBBA, BBBB, BBC, BBE, and BDEA policies. And we don't need to do anything with those, right? Alright, so.
Unless you have questions about them.
Yeah, did you have any questions about anything? Those would be new ones, it's the first time we're seeing it, right?
First reading, yes.
Yeah.
I did have one, but.
Which one?
I believe it had to do with the appointing of a board member, and.
Resignation and removal from office?
No.
Or the actual vacancy?
Appointing someone for a vacancy.
Unexpected term fulfillment procedure?
Yes.
Yeah.
Number five there.
The appointment of a new member will be made by a majority of the board members at an open meeting.
Excuse me, four, I'm sorry.
Okay, board will interview potential appointees in executive session.
Is that something we think is necessary, I don't, we've never done that in the past.
Yeah, that's.
Have we?
Well, I'm not sure what your practice has been, but I've lived this more than once, and that is standard operating procedure. For you guys, essentially what would happen there is, we would put a call-out for anybody interested in that. You know, and there's a, you could even go to the point of asking for a small application. They send you that information, and then you can decide out of those applications, let's say you got twenty, you know, you want to hear it down or whatever, you know, that's not gonna happen, but, and then you would make an appointment with them, you're gonna advertise a board meeting, it's gonna be in the executive session, and you're gonna go through an interview process individually with those people.
And up until I ran, that was standard operating procedure, because nobody wanted to run, correct?
Yeah, that, well, I've been doing this since '08, so.
You made it look so good, everybody wanted to be here.
I bet, set two elections.
Right.
Most of them have been appointments, but we've never went to the, to the degree of an interview process. We did the letter.
We.
In the past, but I think there's only been one time in our whole time that we had more than one.
When we had Lindsay?
Most of the time, it's only one person.
Yeah, so we just took who said they wanted the position.
I think only one time ever have we ever had more than one express interest.
Hey, you want to do that in?
Usually had to seek.
That's, I'm fine with that, I just didn't know if we, I mean, if it's in here, we need to do it, right? So if we're gonna leave it in there, we need to do it.
I think you're spot-on with that, you know, the process that you have, if you've done it in the past, and that's what policies state, that's pretty, that's a typical.
We just, the one time we did have to, we never did an interview process, that I remember, did we?
I think that's right.
We, except we got a letter, I think they sent some questionnaires or whatever, this home, and they filled that out, and then they returned those, maybe, but, no.
Bottom line is, you had justification based on whether you asked people to submit questions that you had for them, and that you went through. Bottom line is, you had conversation and discussion, typically happens in an executive session, to come out and then make your decision, so. So, good question.
Anything else? Alright, we'll move to B.
That's B, I should say B, I know I change it every time.
It does say B.
No.
Right here, I have nine B, and here I have nine D.
Yeah, but it says second, it says section A.
Oh.
I know for a fact I changed those.
It doesn't say you did, though.
Because I just did it last time, so I thought, I'll fix it, I mean, I don't do it.
Alright, so policy review, section B, second reading.
Yes.
BA, BB, BBA, BBAA, and BBB, which weren't included, but we had seen those prior.
We did that in December.
Yeah, anybody had questions or concerns about any of those, we had already seen those last month? Okay, so we'll move to C, policy review. Okay, so we'll move to C, policy review, section A, final reading. AD, AE, AEA, AGA and AH. So if there are any questions or concerns, we just need a motion to approve those policies for the ASBSD manual here.
Yes.
So.
Second, move by Neeble and second by Schofelder to approve the following ASBSD policies. Policy AD, AE, AEA, AGA and AH. Any other discussion? Mary Nuttall, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move to discussion item D, building committee update. Will be presented with an update by the committee on the proposed multi-use facility addition design process adjustments.
Okay, so I did, I reached out to Steve Jastrom from Art Inc. and Jim Weber from Pitts and we hadn't met since early December and then we had the December board meeting, so we didn't have a whole lot to share, but. I was pretty specific about, okay, give me some dates on a timeline here. When are the drawings and the spec, all that stuff's going to be submitted to Pitts? Pitts put up the, the bid package together and get all the specs, you know, put it into that format where they can go to a bid advertisement on that, so Jim did get back to me and essentially, which I think Christmas didn't help and then the weather that we just had, I think probably put a little bit of a wrench in their timeline, what we were originally been told and we were looking at maybe a potential end of February to have a bid opening. Well, we're, the dates that Jim had given me now, we're looking at somewhere between a March 7th and a March 13th timeframe. And that is, that's when we would advertise a bid opening and somewhere between those two days is when we would open the, all the bids that are getting submitted during that timeframe, so. They hope to have all of that information from Art Inc. here by the end of next week and then they need about three weeks to do their homework pits and then potentially two weeks of advertising and then that's going to put us in a position to get to that point, so. It's maybe a little, probably 10 days later than we originally thought was going to happen, but I think it's still within reason and I don't know, I think Mr. Tony and I talked today, you were just visiting and if this continues, you're probably really not digging in the ground in late March and April anyway, so hopefully we are, but who knows with the weather, so I don't think we're anywhere sure where, but that's the timeline, I wanted to make sure everybody was up to, up to.
I think it would still be before the March board meeting though.
That was, that's what I told them, I said, if all way possible can we, you know, with the March 13th date.
Yeah.
So I will put in a note, I said, well, what if, what if we can't and I said, well, I said, it probably is fine. I said, we can have a special board meeting, we'll just publish that and the only thing on the agenda then would be a potential bid opening if necessary, so. It's not the end of the world, but yes, that will work, do everything they can to get it in place by the March, uh, board date, so. Okay?
Okay.
What I got.
I had a question, I was going to ask the bills, but I thought I'd wait until we talked about the facility here, but I see Geotech had some, a bill on the soil, I assume they were soil, that was for.
Yes, they're all the boards, they did, I think, nine boards, seven boards, seven or nine.
So have we heard anything back?
Yes.
What was the prognosis?
Yeah, we shared a little bit, I think, I, maybe I, I'm almost positive, I talked to you guys about that, but you're, you're on unstable ground, so that, that stayed true. Doesn't mean obviously the footprint that you have here, that you've done that, you know, you built on the, this particular structure, soil structure that you do have, but the recommendations in there were whoever gets that portion of the bid, if we get to that point, needs to take some precaution and some care with the soil just because of the fragility of it, the sandiness of it, when you're backhoeing, you're digging. He, the recommendation was is you're going to have to excavate about three foot, the whole thing and then backfill.
So they didn't talk about pilings?
Um, no. Nope. And I think because of the, the structure essentially in way it's going to get designed, I don't remember that word John, I, I could have overlooked it when I read the report, but I don't honestly remember that being a concern. Now, it would tell me that it's a logical concern because of the rest of the report that I read about the fragility of the soil, the sandiness, the texture of it, you know, be careful when you're digging out and when you're digging up against a, an existing structure, take some caution when you're doing that, to not to disrupt, you know, what that structure's already sitting on, so.
Well, I would just make sure who's ever, I just want to make sure we don't get a building after a while that has a crack in it.
Yeah.
And so I get concerned about anything that I have been associated with in this area with the building.
Sure.
I mean, we put in 200 pilings down at Elevator at Dakota Plains.
Sure.
And so we've got really tough soil here, so, anyway, I mean, you're on it.
It's typical, I mean, that's what this whole area particularly, I know Parkston, they say was built on a swamp, I don't know. That's what I've been told, I don't.
A lot of houses flood when it rains too much, so it's pretty true, actually, you just saw that alligator too.
I'm not trying to second guess them, I just, I just want to be real concerned about, I want to make sure we have a really good foundation, so.
And I'll make sure, and I did ask Steve about that, when he got the report, he hadn't finished reading it when I had that conversation with him and this has been a while back, but for what he originally saw and wasn't something in their realm of work that they found peculiar or something they weren't adept at, you know, addressing, so. But definitely make sure it's on their radar screen.
Well, apparently it is, but just up in your bread.
Yeah, but good question.
So are we waiting for, do we have any decisions we need to make before March then?
We will have another, I believe he told me that they, we will have another committee meeting before, they will share all that stuff, information with us before it goes to that bid letting, so.
So if we change some of the, they've talked about cheaping up some stuff, so are we going to make a decision before the bid letting of exactly how we're going to have that, or is that being included?
They're going to write that all as what they call them, options.
Alternatives. Options, got it, okay.
So then we can scratch this or that or whatever.
So it will have money amounts attached to it?
Yeah.
That you can say, I want this or you want this.
Kind of like when we did the track project, the blue slats and the fence and different things like that, we're all add-ons and, or alternate bits.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure we all knew that. Okay, so we will move to E, which is school board election date change. The, school board will discuss the change in date for the next school board election that will be in conjunction with the city election.
We just.
Probably defer to Mr. Bruning on that, it's kind of his baby.
You guys have set the date, you set the date in July at the organizational meeting, but.
What's happening?
No, we set the date.
At that meeting.
July meeting in the organizational minutes for an April election. Yes, but it's already been said, it's just a reminder to the public and to you guys that instead of June being the election day, it's the second Tuesday in April. And we are holding it with the city, I've talked to Mayor Hoffman the other day, because I kind of forgot, new city person up there, I talked to Rachel before, but now he called and we made sure that we're all still okay with that and he's fine and. Then we share workers that way, don't have to hire two sets of workers and things like that.
The important thing is the filing dates, one.
Yes.
Date in which you can take out a petition and then two, the timeframe in which you have to file or circulate the petition and then three, the end date in which you have to file the petition, those are different than what we're.
And it's coming up here at the end of January.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's soon.
That's why we talked about, that's why I wanted to talk about it tonight.
So that will be in the paper then, or what?
Yes, yep.
Okay, with dates and, do you have the dates right now?
Um, yes, circulation of petition begins January 27th. And they are due back then. I gotta get my calendar to cooperate, sorry. They're due back February 24th. And then, then I got my publications in March and the deadlines, like for voter registration, March 27th for that April, I think it's 11.
And there's.
Second Tuesday, yes, it's second Tuesday.
You met you and Matt, that's right, yeah, okay.
I'm pretty sure. Yep.
Okay. All right, any questions or anything else about that topic?
Yeah, there's no motion needed to be done, we already did, I just wanted to inform.
Sure, thank you.
Some sort of change.
All right, we will move to discussion item F. School calendar date changes, the school board will discuss the current school calendar to address the loss of school days due to inclement weather.
You have that colored copy in your board packet, just for salt need to reference, I guess. Couple things to consider, I guess, or at least keep in context, are minutes. So I will go back to comments Mr. Knibbling and Mr. Fisher made about how we strategized and used e-learning in the first early December storm and we stayed in school a little bit longer than I would say a lot of our neighboring school districts, so. When we went to e-learning, we have to make adjustments in our student information management system in our school calendar. We're not claiming the totality of minutes that we would if we were in school, so we make those adjustments. And making sure that each level gets the minutes in. We're still going to be in a good spot as of right now, even with the three days that we missed, to make sure with the date that we have scheduled for dismissal, which is May 17th, if we don't have any future events like we just had. So the minutes are there, but if we do have something similar, then we'll have to do some hard looking. What we claim in the high school is different than the minutes of what we claimed at the elementary. We claimed four hours at the high school and then at the elementary, we claimed three hours. So rather than the, the seven that we have typically been accounted for. And, and that's a fair allocation, I believe with the interaction that was going on in our six through, actually four through 12 and then our K through three, just a little bit different than what our approach was there from a learning packet perspective. So, you know, the question that's posed to the school board and what, you know, the teachers are going to want to know come next Monday, because we have a dismissal early out, we have professional development, we're going to stick with that, but one of the things they're going to ask me or ask us is, okay, how many days we adding to the end of the calendar? When are we going to make those days up? So the minute side of it is okay for now, contractually, Craig, help me, they have in their contracts 177.
Yes.
Right? So, you know, how to recoup those days and you guys have, the experienced ones, you know, have been through this before as far as, you know, I pose to you guys, at what point in time do you draw a line in the sand and say, okay, anything after this then, you know, we'll forgive, you know, from a contractual perspective, so.
Those e-learning days though, they count?
Yeah.
As a teacher day, right?
It's a word.
Yeah, yeah, they count for them, so they miss three, just like.
Talking is these first ones here to start the second, so, right?
Yeah. So we're short three days.
So you're.
Because we did not engage in any e-learning in the first three days, it just, there was no way to do that with being the end of the semester and we didn't have anything organized per se, so.
Yeah, absolutely, that's right. So what you're asking us is what, what are our options to add days at the end? Like, do we have to do it now or is it if we have more?
I know, that's part of the conversation, because they're going to ask me, they want to know, you know, are you going to keep me here till? When, are we going to keep kids here till when?
So, but what you're saying to us though is that with the minutes we are at currently, if we add nothing at the end of the year, students have met.
Students are.
Their standards.
Students playing and.
Okay, but if we have any more days off without e-learning, our students will need to add days too?
We'd have to take a hard look at it.
Yeah, okay.
To make sure that the minutes are acquired, so.
Okay, so right now you're just asking us, do we want to add the days for teachers?
Essentially, I mean, contractually, because that's what they're, they're short three days, so. If you look at the May calendar, we're out 17th, so I think Craig is informed to me in years past, you may have suggested that you finish that week then, even with kids, go 18, 19 and then you would come back the following Monday and give teachers a workday, you know, so contractually then, you know, they fulfill what they've done or what they need to do from a contractor perspective.
That's what we did in the past, yeah.
Makes sense, yeah. You know, there's options there, you know, we looked at dates, you could look at dates that are identified on the calendar as vacation days. You know, from the staff, what I would call our development day, I don't know that that's really a place, an advantage to take care of because they're scheduled to work those days anyway, so they're not gaining anything on that concept, so.
I don't really want to change their days off in the schedule, just because people probably already have plans.
Some people do.
Yeah, I would hate to make someone change their plans for that. I'd rather add for teachers at the end of the year, me personally, but I don't know, what do you guys think?
We got to add, I think, to the end of the year is about really our only option, not to, I mean, we got a few that have plans, that's coming to them.
So just the teachers on 18th and 19th or finish in the week with kids, 18, 19 and then bring teachers back the 22nd?
Well, if we're meeting, yeah, I mean, do we have to, I mean, I guess.
We don't have to bring the students back.
We don't have to bring the students.
I think you're.
The region track meet is the Thursday anyway.
Yep, it is.
So you had, I mean, some kids are going to be.
Tough to have.
Anyway.
Tough to have semester tests when you have region track meet, you have to be a mess.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's going to be here, which also means, one thing you can do is you can have all the staff work the region track meet, that's part of their workday and then you'd be fully staffed, I don't know.
Wow, that was slick.
And do they have to make the decision necessarily tonight, not necessarily?
I think for students.
In the past, we've waited, haven't we, if I remember right now, we've waited a little bit longer to.
And I think the determining factor on that, let's see what mother nature does.
Well, that's what I was just going to say.
We could be having a different conversation in a month from.
If we have more without e-learning, then yes, I would say students should come back both three days.
But he could at least tell them at in-service that we're kind of following tradition and they will be added to the end of the year.
So they'll go Thursday, Friday, the teachers, Thursday, Friday, Monday.
They're short three days.
Yeah, but our students won't come back unless we miss more without e-learning.
Right.
Yeah, okay, I think that's fine.
Could we give them the option of Thursday, Friday and then put it to voters to whether they want to come back on Monday or take one of these other days?
Rather than coming back that next Monday.
Monday, or if they want to take one of these other days? I mean, I don't know, like I said, I'm new, I don't know.
They could work an extra one of those other ones that they, because remember, they didn't have to work them all.
They had to choose out of the seven that were there, they had to engage in four.
Four.
You can.
Yeah, you could do that, well, that's new for us, we've never had that option before, so. I mean, that would be a nice perk, I guess, so they don't have to come back the Monday and they still get their workday in.
Sure.
Okay, I can relay this message.
Because three days of teacher workday.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. Well, if, if the kids aren't coming back Thursday.
Right, right.
To bring them back again on Monday after two days of.
Well, there possibly could be excess of moving stuff around because of the possible project.
Yep.
So that might be something to consider.
In the past, we've kind of only given them one workday, if I remember right, two, right?
So.
Two there, that's a possibility.
Okay, did that give you the?
Yep, I can do that.
Do we need to approve anything or?
I don't think so.
Because we're.
Nope.
I think you wait.
You're not making anything yet, it's done, it's a conversation, so.
Okay.
I don't, I know it was under the action item.
You will have to do so eventually.
Because the contracts are there and that's.
Because you haven't really done anything with the kids yet.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Kids are the more important.
You can table it, so we can make a motion to table it for further, until inclement weather gets.
At least get another 30 days on our ballot.
Okay, sounds good.
We had a motion to table.
Mud days too, not too long.
It was an action item.
I don't know.
No, it was just a discussion item.
No, it was just a discussion item, it's not under action, it's just discussed.
Did you want a motion to table, Craig?
It's a, it's not an action item, you have it under discussion item, so I, did you wait?
Is it discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, my fault.
Yep.
Yep, you're good.
Okay, we'll move to number 10, action items. Under action items, we have A, to approve financial report, the school board will review the December financial report for discussion approval.
So, on the financial report, if you look in the general fund column there, there's a tuition R home, 143,0298 there that came in with the state aid money this month. And that is the BRFT money that we get from the state for the students over at the R home for last school year. We always get that portion behind. So, that's, that's why the, that line item, tuition R home is high this month, was because of that. Other than that, we made the bond redemption payment there, moved money from basically capital outlay over to the bond redemption to for 660,000.
Remind me how that works again, and that's where the track, right?
Yes, that's where the Q's at, bonds, and there's 0% interest. We put, we make two payments a year, 66,000, one in June and one in December, until we get to the 924,000.
Into this account?
Into this, it's still our bank account, we have a bank account in the Bank of, First National Bank of Phillip.
Okay.
And so, that's why it still shows up on our financial report here, we're basically just moving money from the capital outlay fund over to there.
Once we get that?
To that bank.
That 900,000, whatever?
Then it goes to them, then we make the payment to them. Yes. But we're not gaining interest on that money, but we're not paying interest on that money either. That's why they get to use, they get to use that money as, as backing for their stuff.
And if you sold the qualified, and they're called Qualified Zone Academy funds, if you got them sold, and that's kind of the lower of them at a very low interest, either percent or even lower, or sometimes almost zero.
Ours was zero.
Yeah, which it's, I don't know how they're making their money on it, whoever bought your bonds in that respect, but it's hap- it's not uncommon. But, I mean, you won't find it now, obviously, 'cause it's neither becoming, but yeah, it's a, that's really good. You find yourself in that situation.
Um, let's see what else, one of the disbursements in the capital outlay, just so you know, I mean, that's 122, but one of the bills when there was 27,000, we paid for the track, the pole vault pit that came in. We had a bill for that, is one of the reasons why that disbursement was high. And then the lunch, food service, that balance is good. Which we'll talk, it leads to another discussion there, action item we're here coming forward. But enterprise fund, you know, negative, that, don't worry about that. We will make a transfer at the end from the general fund, that was budgeted. We know that at some point it gets to the negative number because of the revenue and, and stuff, because that's where we're paying our preschool teacher out of. And, you know, it took till January to get negative, so? This is the first month, I think that it was. Any other questions?
So, you feel good about our general fund right now?
Um, compared to the last couple, you know, the last three years, yes, I'm, it's better than I, yeah. So? And the capital outlay fund will come up too, because I, there's, you know, the, we've paid a lot of money out to for the equipment for the HVAC? Project that I haven't necessarily all got back in yet, so? You know, we made, you know, last month, we did a 30 some thou- we've had, we've been having to pay for some, what was, I can't remember what the billing said, but just some of the work part of it, getting things ready and stuff like that and storing it.
Certain percentages or something.
That I haven't necessarily done the reimbursements for, yeah.
Yeah, you, have you asked for those reimbursements?
Some of them, the first one, the buying like 227,000 of it, yes.
You asked for?
Yeah. Some of it, but not all of it.
And this state aid, that's the new number?
Yes, that's the new number, now remember, it, they, they go by the old number for like the first, last month was the first time it got updated. So, in December, I think, was the same, if I remember right. But you had September, October, November, all at the old rate, so it's high, but it's also high because you were paid out, for in our situation, since we went up, it's also making up for the missed portion of those three months. So, it's not necessarily gonna be 223. Yeah. It will be going forward for the rest of this year, but next year, if, if status quo stays the same, maybe it's 218 type of deal. 'Cause we made up for those lesser payments the first three months that they made to us.
What is admissions?
Gate, for gate receipts for like, and JV, like entry fees for the JV wrestling maybe.
Oh, okay.
And gate gates for basketball, volleyball, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Is the admissions.
Any other questions? Alright. Do we need a motion to approve, yeah?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Move by pro and second by needle, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pro, same sign, motion carried.
Alright, we'll move to action item B, consider food service fund balance. The school board will address the food service fund balance with respect to the cited excess balance by DOE slash CANAS? Or is it cans or what?
Cans, yep.
Cans, okay.
Child, adult nutrition services.
Alright, thank you for that.
Do you need it, Craig? Nope, it's right here. It's the letter? I'm just finding where was the packet pack. So, yeah, there was a three-page or four-page letter that I got from the Department of Ed saying that our balances exceeds the three-month average expenditures. But even though DOE is allowing a temporary flexibility of five months' average expenditures with a two-year spend down plan, this letter is notifying you that the SFA was in excess of three months' net cash and should begin spending down the excess funds before next year. We are not required to submit a spend down plan yet, but if we don't get, I might guess if we don't get below at least the five-month average by the end of the year, then we may have to. We bought some new racks, because in, in the freezers or in the coolers, they haven't come in yet, that was probably 6, 7 thousand dollars, I think it was, to replace all of the shelving in the coolers themselves. And in, just in some of the places in the storage areas. But, you know, last year, we replaced an oven, we replaced the warmer, we replaced the food bar. We're getting down to, and last year, we still did pre-lunch Fridays, we called them. And, you know, there's really only one big ticket item left to, and it's not, I don't know if it's needed yet, and that's a dishwasher, and that's gonna be a huge expenditure item, I mean, those are, that could be 20 to 30,000 for one of those. I mean, if you were to replace ours with something of its equivalence, because what I'm told is when that got put in, that was kind of the Cadillac dishwasher. It's getting probably, I don't know, 50, when was the? I can't remember how old it is. When, I think when they redemodeled the lunchroom, that it was. I don't know if it's original. But there was a remodel time, I'd have to look and see, I don't know exactly the age. But we had a repair guy in, and he goes, the only thing that's tough for them right now is to replace, if that's one motor were to go by it bad, getting replacements for that is getting harder and harder, because of its age. Because other than that though, he says, everything looks in good condition, and because the ladies do a nice job down there and take care of stuff. But, that's a big ticket.
So, do we need to get down to like 90 or 100,000, Craig?
What did it say, I think so, there's a third sheet, if I remember right. Our three-month operating expenditure based on last year's, the 21, 22 school year's financial statement was 104,000, and we're at 185.
So, even if you bought that?
That's what I mean, yeah.
And you gave free, like one day a week, you'd still be questionable.
Oh, yeah, we would have to give a few more than probably, because I looked up the school calendar, there's only 12 Fridays left in the school year.
That's ridiculous.
That we're in schooling, there's 18 weeks. Yes. There's 18 weeks and six of the Fridays are taken off, so maybe it's free lunch Monday instead of Friday, but?
Wow, that's crazy.
So, what, what happens to the money? What, do we have to give it to?
What would happen is we probably wouldn't get some of our federal reimbursements until we got down to that point. We would lose, because what's happening is they're thinking we're supplementing, or using the federal reimbursements to, and we're not putting enough of our own local money into it.
So, if that happens, does that kick us out for two or three years?
Um, that I don't know about for a number of years, or if it's till it gets down, I'd have to ask that question. But right now, you know, we, you, once you get, Beersford is the same situation, they got the same letter a week before I did, but they have to submit a plan. Ours doesn't have to submit the plan yet, so I don't know if we're a year behind away from having to submit two-year plan or not, for sure.
But as long as your balance stays below the amount, you're fine, right?
Yeah, the three-month operating.
You won't even get the letter then, or have to submit the plan, as long as it stays below enough.
Yes. And I figured out, you know, the last time we did this, I, our federal reimbursement rates right now, currently, still, as of last month, for some, for a free lunch, the every free lunch we serve, the federal rate that we get back is $4.33. And our, our problem with this is, is they make us raise our local rates to stay within a certain percentage of what the federal rate is. Because we technically might have to raise our own rate next year if you don't ask for forgiveness there as well, because, but I don't wanna raise the rate because we don't need the money.
You gotta stay in compliance.
But you gotta stay in compliance with this, um?
Can you like supplement or give different types of things or options at their food, like at the?
You still gotta meet the guidelines.
But then, does that make you raise your price? Sorry, Matt.
No, I was just saying, so what, I mean, I know this is probably the most regulated part of the whole school, is the food, but is there, is there more? Do we use a, some type of service to prepare these? I mean, not to actually make them in the kitchen, to provide the supplies or the ingredients, the? I'm not familiar with how that works, how does that?
Where we get the food and stuff like that?
Yeah.
You mean?
You have vendors.
Vendors, yeah.
Okay.
Food vendors, US Foods is one of them that we use. Reinhardt, we use Reinhardt a lot, that's the big one.
I see that.
There's three of them, Cashway, Reinhardt, Cashway's kinda going?
We don't use, I asked Judy the other day.
She kinda quit using them.
She quit, 'cause they?
There's only two that she uses now.
They wouldn't play nice, so she kicked them to the curb.
So, I guess what I was getting at, I mean, is we kinda have a re- ongoing issue here, I mean, we can only buy our assets out of this for so long, so is there some way we can step up a notch on the, on the food that we're getting? You know what I'm saying?
As long as it meets? Yeah. But that, that's the thing, is it's all about, I mean, you guys remember, these guys don't remember, but we used to get pictures of our meals sent to us, that they weren't very good quality, and I don't hear complaints about necessarily the quality of the food, at least I haven't, in a handful of years.
But is there like better program, like better companies that provide?
But here's the thing, you gotta?
I don't, I don't, that's not the right word, but you know what I mean?
You gotta go through a procurement process.
Okay.
And get your? You gotta bid out all the food that you buy as well.
You don't get to pick and choose through the process, some of it you can, but a majority of it, when you're doing, when you're using USDA dollars to do that, you have to go through a procurement process, and then the low man is the winner. I mean, because USDA says?
So, you have to use who they say?
You don't get to do that.
That's what you were kind of asking, wasn't it?
And it's not necessarily, it just depends who's the little bidder that year, so let's just say we're talking about chicken nuggets. Your, your Reinhardt, your food services, and your, let's say you were a Cashway. You're all gonna, I'm gonna go to you guys and say, okay, I need 12 cases, 250 chicken nuggets in each case. Give, what's your bid? You know, and then?
You gotta take the low.
The low man, we have to, 'cause it's, uh, the dollars that you're using are coming through the USDA, or it's a government commodity. And then you have to take the low man on that deal. So, Craig's point is, is so if you think that there's an opportunity to maybe amp that up a little bit and expend some more money in that particular market, you're kinda hamstrung, they don't want you to do that, but in the same token?
They're telling you to not have so much money.
They're telling you, yeah, exactly.
And the problem is, or not a problem, but, I'm sorry, I would say 95% of the schools are not in our predicament.
I, I've told you guys, this is uncharted territory for me, so.
Can they just get more food from the price of the thing?
It used to be us too.
No, because you gotta follow the serving sizes.
Okay, or can you offer different options?
Because that's what, that's what people, we could offer different options, and then some of that stuff's gonna get probably thrown away, because you're not gonna serve it, because they were gonna pick this one, and then you have too much of this, and not enough of that, and then?
But is there like other things that you don't throw away, like more fruit, more yogurt, more whatever that kids like?
You know, to be honest with you, our kids don't utilize the fruit and veggie bar like it probably should be utilized.
They, they take the scoop they have to take.
Okay.
And don't eat it.
Okay.
And that's one of the?
That would be what I would choose.
That, that fits, whatever goes on their plate from a reimbursable meal perspective? And don't get me wrong, or get us wrong, I mean, I've seen several kids come back to the salad bar?
Yes.
Eat the stuff on the salad bar. You know, but even those items, in some respects, depending on which item it is, which month it is, is coming through USDA. I mean, there are things such as fruit that is, it could fall under the government commodity perspective, and then you have to follow the rules in order to?
We get so much, we get like 23,000 dollars worth of government commodities each year.
And this money has to be used on food or anything related?
Well, it can be used on salad, well, there's a list of things here, that they said in the allowable cost ideas. Increase food salary, service salaries, offer bonuses, improve premise to equipment to support healthier meals, the safety and nutrition quality of the food served. Milk coolers, cash registers, computers, and when we purchase a new computer for the lunchtime, we take it out of there. I mean, we take part of my salary out of there. Now, are we doing that currently, like on a per month basis? No, it's kinda like the sped director salary with Mr. M, his portion, at the end, we make an adjustment. We do that same thing with the custodial salaries, because they cleaning the lunchroom every day, so we take a portion of that, not throughout the year, but at the end, so that's why it'll come down a little bit from that dollar amount at that time.
How many staff work there again, tell me?
We've got two more than normal, the way it is.
Okay.
I mean, we used to be, back in the day, we had five. And right now, I think there's seven hands, seven sets of hands.
They're not all?
Full-time.
1.0 FT easy.
One of them's a three and a half hour, two of them are about five to six hours. And then another one drives part-time and then is in there part-time, so we got two of those about four-hour people, three and a half to four, two, five and a half to six, and then three, seven. She drives, um?
She do roll.
Yeah, she drives a student up Mitchell back, and then goes to the center.
Okay, I thought you meant for like lunches.
No, sped capacity, and then comes in, works in the kitchen.
So, only half of her salary's coming out of the food service, the other half's coming out of?
Okay. That was maybe the question, I was just confused.
Host a meal for parents, community members to promote the program. Offer local grown fresh fruits, veggies, vegetables daily.
So, raises then?
It's one thing.
And pre-day and?
Offer, and there is that, offer free breakfast to reduced or paid students. And then the other, next line says offers free lunch to reduced students, only I think it's supposed to be reduced to paid students, because we could do that before, I think it's just a?
Yes.
Yes.
Could we increase that breakfast menu somewhat?
Here's the thing with the breakfast menu. Why, the reason why the last time we did this, I didn't promote the breakfast time, because some people just do free breakfast period, and then don't even seek reimbursements for the breakfast or anything. Not all kids can get there. And the buses don't, the buses don't get in in time for, especially during the wintertime.
Not everybody benefited from it, that's why we didn't do that, yeah.
I mean, you look at our, our breakfast numbers, so our total breakfast in the, our total meals in the month of this, though this was November's, was 6,136 meals, breakfast were only 1,152.
It's not as well attended as one would like it to be, so you're not?
It was more attended when it was all free, the last two years prior to. I mean, I don't have those, those are in the file back there, but it was more attended then.
So, if we offered all free Fridays, how much money is that?
So, the last time I did have my spreadsheet, I replugged in the new, it's about, I would say, depending on the number of meals, but if it was based on those number of meals that I had plugged in before, which our number of meals really haven't changed much, it was about 1,200 to 1,400 dollars a day. it was about twelve to fourteen hundred dollars a day.
Okay, so times twelve, so twelve hundred times twelve essentially?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
If you did every Friday, that's left, yeah.
Yeah, and then if we got a free dishwasher, or just not free, if we paid for a dishwasher, what is that, thirty thousand you said, maybe?
And that's a Cadillac.
I put one in.
Well, why not, I mean, if you have the money and we can use it, why not, and then raises, what else do we do, right?
I put one in right before you guys hired me, and ours was about, I think it was somewhere between twelve and fifteen as well, yeah, so, and they're not like, I mean, when they do kind of the bells and whistles, I mean, the size of them, I don't know, there's a whole lot, it's more about the model and the horsepower than, than it is anything.
Because you have all the tabletop portions, you're just replacing the dishwasher right now too, so, I mean, those are some things, I, 'cause I'm just telling you, we're gonna come up with some, are you guys okay with doing the free meals, I mean, because to me, that helps our people the most, um, because.
If we could give back, that would be.
Yeah.
Do you have something?
I was just saying, could PB and J's be free?
No, because I've gotta actually go through a week's worth of menus and count up those, and our, we have to charge for them, I am actually probably not charging enough.
Good.
We, you have to charge for those at a certain, based on the cost of what it is for that peanut butter and chocolate, and since food prices went up, I'm guessing this year, we might get a little notice saying that next year they have to go up.
But yeah, you have too much money.
Because it's, it's called, it's, your à la carte items, anything you do on an à la carte has to be, because otherwise, you're using federal money to support, supplant your à la carte items, which aren't part of your federally reimbursable meal. Because I wanted to, I made those as cheap as I could, but now, like I said, the food prices have went up, so, my guess is we maybe should have probably raised those, but.
And they can't be part of the salad bar, those, I consider. Fruit spread.
I wish, that's, I mean, there's so many.
So does the money that's in the school lunch account, is that what we, what people pay in for their kids as well, sits in that account?
Yes, yes, yep.
It's not just government reimbursement?
No, no, uh-uh.
That's your revenue too.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, yes, and if there's an excess, so, I mean, I don't know if there's a lot of excess right now, people don't use that as savings accounts necessarily, um, families-wise, I mean, they, but our negative balances aren't super, I mean, remember back then, they used to be close to ten thousand dollars worth of negative balances, and we're not there still. I mean, we're at, maybe right around two.
So if we were gonna do raises, do you have a way to do that, or?
Raises for the staff, well then you're looking at, what do you, you gotta do raises for everyone else.
Well, it's a school lunch account, so, yeah, that's true.
We need to do a, a food staff bonus.
We could, we could do bonuses, you could do maybe, um, some clothing or something like that too possibly, but, I mean, that's one thing you gotta think of, is, how are you gonna explain that to the staff at that time?
Yeah.
It, it creates an inequity in distribution of resources that has a tendency to upset people.
Other Fridays and the dishwasher, you know, plus where you need to be, or do we need to look at maybe on a?
We might have to go more than just Friday.
That would be fun, I think.
I mean.
What, what would, maybe breakfast, maybe both meals free, free on Friday?
Well, the breakfasts aren't gonna save you much.
Okay.
I mean, you're, you're probably lucky to a couple hundred bucks.
Should we swing on Monday and Friday then?
We could look into that, or we could just go Mondays right away and start not mess with the Fridays, 'cause we're missing so many, and then you get six more days.
Yeah, there you go.
For sure.
I mean, coming, coming off of a weekend.
You're gonna get a larger number, you're gonna put a dent in what you need to put dent in.
I think Monday's would be maybe the better, better alternative, what do you guys?
And remember, it's a two-year deal, okay, because they said, um, even when we do have to do the plan, our written plan is a two-year plan, so it's not something that has to be, if we get down to there by the end of this, of this school year, then you wouldn't have to do a two-year plan possibly, but, you may have a couple more.
Yeah.
It's not like they're gonna cut you off of the federal reimbursements next school year, because we're not to the point of the written two-year plan yet either, like other schools were. So I'll keep, uh, we'll start working on that, we'll, um, kid, I have everything all set up still from the last time, so, it won't be hard to.
So you'll offer one or two days a week?
You wanna start with one, Mondays and go there, or do you wanna go Monday and Friday?
I mean, knowing how much money we have, if we're not doing anything other than the dishwasher, and we wanna be at a hundred and four thousand, there's a lot of money there to make up.
I think Monday and Friday, in my opinion.
I'm fine with that, since there's only twelve Fridays, I mean, yeah, why not?
Well, last time.
Is that good with you? Matt, you're good? Matt?
As long as that doesn't bring it down too low, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we could start, start it, and you can always stop it at a stroke time.
Yeah, we can stop it.
Because the last time, when I did my free day calculations thing here, I had twenty-three Fridays when we started talking about this the last time, and if you were to do twenty-three days, at, a total I have, when I put in the new federal reimbursement rates of thirteen, thirteen hundred dollars a day, that was based on those meals that specific day, was, if you, if they were all close to that, or same to that, it was about thirty thousand, for twenty-three days, so.
Yeah, we definitely need to do two days for a while, so, yeah, and then you look into a dishwasher, or do we not wanna replace that?
I've already had quotes for a dishwasher, because I tried to write a grant to get a dishwasher, because Judy, the school, they have, um, food service grants out there as well to get new equipment, and they had an excess of money this year for the grants, um, so we looked at doing it, but we didn't get it done in time, and I've done it in the past too, we didn't get, because, I don't know if we didn't get selected because of our balance.
That would make sense to me.
I've tried it two other times, and we never got it.
Well, that makes sense, let somebody else have it, who needs it, I suppose, yeah. Okay, sounds good, any other questions or comments?
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, let's, I think, because it was an action item here, so. To approve free lunches, two days a week, until further notice, how does that sound?
Mm-hmm.
Sounds good.
Rather than, we'll just put two days a week, rather than, um, specifying days, because maybe, maybe we wanna go Monday, Thursday, if that week doesn't have a Friday in it.
Sure.
To, things keep, I mean, January's good, because there's not, there's no Fridays off in January, it's, it's the Februaries and the Marches when we don't have many.
Yeah, that's fine.
Days.
Okay.
So, Sean Felder?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Turner, to approve free lunches, two days a week, until further notice, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried.
Do we, can we talk about the February meeting date? Are you good with that, does it need to be added to anything or change? Um, I was wondering if you, if we could change the February meeting date to the Monday before?
We better ask Craig about that.
Well, the bills won't be in, and.
I would not be here on the sixth.
It could be the Monday after, the twentieth.
So what is February, so?
February thirteenth is a Monday, you got six, thirteenth, and twentieth for your Mondays in February.
And twenty-seventh.
And thirteenth is the original board.
Mm-hmm, I'm looking at that right now.
Second Monday.
Um, so.
I could do the sixth, twentieth, or the twenty-seventh, I just can't do the thirteenth.
Can you do the fourteenth?
No.
I could do the sixth, the twentieth is gonna be out, thirteenth.
Twentieth is too late to get bills sent out, we'd have to mail the checks prior to, otherwise we're gonna get too many, uh, notices.